Please rise as you are able. I now call this meeting of City Council to order.
The city of Barrie acknowledges the traditional territory of the Anishnaab people, which include the Odawa, Ojibwe, and Badawatomi nations collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We also acknowledge the Wendat nation Huron who occupied these lands prior to the middle of the 17th century. We're dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and recognize the enduring presence of indigenous peoples on this land. We're committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. You may be seated. Well, welcome to Barrie City Council. Tonight, sorry, we got started about a minute behind, but we're going to work through the agenda this evening. It is a full agenda. We have awards and recognition and certificates, and we also have deputations to deal with this evening. So there's quite a few different things happening tonight. But the good news for those receiving certificates is there's also lots of people here for other things. So you're not alone in the council chambers tonight, and word will travel fast. So I'm going to move on to the confirmation of the minutes. The first item on the agenda, and the last council meeting was August 13th of 2025. Those have been circulated. Are there any corrections for members of council? I'm seeing none, so they are adopted as printed and circulated. So we're going to move into awards and recognition, and I'm going to just move over to the other microphone. Check. Yep, perfect. Well, thank you so much. So members of council, tonight we have a few opportunities to provide recognition, and certainly I know that councillor Harris is going to be joining us in a few minutes for the Spirit Catcher Awards. But on behalf of Barrie City Council, I'd like to begin by congratulating Fatima Azam, who placed third at the Canada Wide Science Fair for her project entitled Cardio Call and Oxygenated Response. I would like to now call upon Fatima Azam to come down to the podium for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Nettle, councillors and community members. My name is Fatima Azam, and I'm currently a grade nine student at Barrie North Collegiate. I'm honored to be here tonight to share a bit about my experience at the Canada Wide Science Fair earlier this year, where I was proud to represent our city and even more proud to bring home a bronze medal. The Canada Wide Science Fair is the country's largest annual youth science, technology, engineering, and mathematics event. This year it was held in New Brunswick and brought together 400 students from across Canada. It was an amazing opportunity to meet and connect with these young scientists. My project was called Cardio Call and Oxygenated Response. I found that in southern Ontario, the average ambulance response time varied between eight to 13 minutes. To tackle this issue, I created an innovative emergency response system consisting of two features: a button to automatically down line on one, coupled with the deployment of an oxygen mask for instant medical assistance before first responders arrive, in turn reducing the response time to around five minutes. I was extremely honored to receive a bronze medal, but the experience was much more than just that. In old tradition at the fair's pin trading, I had the chance to trade pins with students from every province and territory, including the ones I received from our mayor. It really made me proud to represent Barrie and Simcoe County and share where I'm from. This journey started with a small spark of curiosity and a topic I was passionate about. That idea took me all the way to the national stage, where I got to stand among Canada's top young scientists, wearing a medal and my community's support. Thank you to the mayor, city council, and everyone here tonight for recognizing my work and giving me the chance to share my experience. I'm truly grateful for the support I've received from my community, my family, and my school, Cundalhite, especially my grade eight teacher, Mrs Hazelwood. It was an honor to represent Barrie, and I look forward to building on this experience and continuing to grow as a young scientist. Thank you.
Do you want to come down for a photo? You're welcome to come down and take a photo if you'd like. Yes, sir. I think you have some proud parents. What do you think? Yeah, me too. All right, well, we'll take... I'm very tall. I can go back. Members of council, the... Whoa, that's loud. Hello, how are you? Worry about those folks at home just now. Recognition tonight is going to continue with Kyla Krachek, general manager of Chartwell-Allendale Station on her achievement on swimming 1.5 kilometers across Kempenfelt Bay. On behalf of Barrie City Council, I would like to congratulate Kyla of Chartwell-Allendale Station in raising nearly $8,000 by swimming 1.5 kilometers in the Local Hero Swims for Seniors Dreams event. I'd like to call Kyla down to come to the podium to say a few words and receive the certificate. Kyla, if you could join us, Kylie.
Wow, Mayor Nettle, council, and some special guests in the room. I have some Chartwell-Allendale Station residents here, and they're also tuning in online. So thank you to all of you. One of my favorite parts about my job as general manager at Chartwell-Allendale Station is hearing the stories of our incredible residents. Last winter, Joan, who's in her 90s, shared with me that when she turned 60, she swam across Kempenfelt Bay, and it was that story that inspired the swim. Chartwell Wish of a Lifetime is on a mission to grant wishes for Canadian seniors. We know that these wishes improve the overall quality of life of seniors and also reduces the stigma associated with aging. We believe that no matter what your age, you can do anything, you can accomplish anything, and that's what the swim was all about. So thank you so much today for recognizing this, and a huge thank you to everything that you do here in Barrie.
Would some of our Chartwell folks like to come over for a photo?
Yeah, maybe we can go there.
Or we want to go there?
If I can leave you with one action item, I ask everyone who's listening to think about the Canadian seniors that are in your life. Ask them what their wishes and dreams are, and then go online at Chartwell Wish of a Lifetime and submit those dreams because we're really eager to make more wishes come true. I'm excited to share that we just had authorized a wish come true for a woman in Collingwood who's 104 years old. So continue to submit those wishes. We want to make them come true, and let's make them come true here on a local level. Thank you again.
Well, thank you so much, Kyla, and thank you for your courage in completing that swim as well. Our third item tonight is recognition for the Order of the Spirit Catcher. So I'm going to invite councillor Harris to come over and lead that up here, and I'll take a seat right here until you're done, councillor.
So thank you, Mayor Nettle. It is my absolute pleasure on behalf of councillor Nagusay to award this year's Order of the Spirit Catcher Awards. The city of Barrie is proud to announce the recipients of the 2025 Order of the Spirit Catcher Awards for outstanding Barrie volunteers who selflessly give their time and energy to help others and enhance the city. The Order of the Spirit Catcher Awards are the highest honor bestowed by the city to volunteers who have made an important contribution to our community. The award celebrates selfless dedication to making a positive difference in our city. Established in 2000, the Order of the Spirit Catcher recognized outstanding community contributions, and this year the youth and adult award category has returned along with a new category to honor seniors. Nominees must be a Barrie resident and demonstrate one or more of the following qualities: first, an individual who has selflessly devoted their time and energy to help others; second, has made a significant long-term contribution to the lifestyle of the community; and third, through exceptional achievement, has benefited others and brought honor to the city of Barrie. So it is my pleasure to now call upon Mr Marshall Green, who is the 2025 Order of the Spirit Catcher senior category winner. So, yeah, and before I hand it over to Marshall, and yes, you'll be able to say a few words if you came prepared, I just want to give you a little bit of a description of what Marshall has meant to our community. As noted, this award recognizes Marshall Green for his longstanding service to the community and his distinguished history with many organizations, including the Barrie Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary Club of Barrie, the Amshalom Synagogue, Theater by the Bay, and the Barrie Community Foundation, to name a few. Marshall has volunteered his time to numerous fundraising campaigns, including those for the Royatory Regional Health Centre, the expansion of the Barrie YMCA, the Barrie Public Library, and the implementation of a legacy of community benefits for sports, culture, and the environment. His extensive community involvement and contribution to a wide range of Barrie organizations and achievements over the many decades have made the city of Barrie a better community. Marshall, your dedication and impact on the community is truly inspiring. Thank you, and congratulations for your service.
Mayor Nettle and council, and friends who've come out very surprisingly tonight as well. I didn't realize I was supposed to say anything, but then when I heard the first two, I quickly wrote something down. My wife and I moved here in 1973. Barrie had 26,000 people then, and maybe two restaurants you could eat at and not get to food poisoning. It was a very different Barrie then. I started my legal career in Barrie and spent, just retired after 48 years here. I've always felt that lawyers take a lot out of the community. That's how we make our money, and I always felt as well that you had to do something to put it back in. And we don't do this for the accolades, but it is nice to receive them, by the way. For the future, we get as much out of doing community work, frankly, as the community gets back as well. It's well worth your time to give your time. Consider volunteering your time and your talent. We very much need the next generation to volunteer their time. I get asked almost on a weekly basis for some people to help retire or to help replace some of the senior people on boards that are retiring, and it appears to be very hard to get the next generation who admittedly have a different kind of lifestyle than we had. So I'm asking you to consider the community, consider doing community service work, and let's make Barrie even better than it has been in the last 55 years. Thank you. I wouldn't have had the award without you, so...
Yeah, you're tall.
I do want to mention that my daughter, who is one of the three children who stayed in Barrie, is volunteering. She's been on the RBH board. I would like to see many more of her generation do the same. Thank you.
It's now my pleasure to call upon Ben Capello to the podium. Ben is the winner of the adult category for this year's Order of the Spirit Catcher Award. Again, it's my pleasure to speak a bit about Ben's contribution. Ben is a remarkable volunteer who has continuously given his time and energy to help the community by volunteering for countless community events, charities, and fundraisers. A cancer survivor himself, Ben participated as a model in the RAW and Reflective Fundraising Calendar for Guilds of the Club Simcoe Muskoka, and sold several thousand dollars' worth of calendars. He raised over $5,000 for the Barrie Women and Children's Shelter by parachuting out of a plane. That's a big commitment to inspire donations and awareness. Ben also supports Guys That Give, Barrie Families Unite, Barrie Chamber of Commerce events, and the 25th Anniversary Legacy event for the Gift a Family campaign, and even volunteered to act in a murder mystery play to raise funds for Rainbows for Children Canada. Whether fundraising, organizing, or simply showing up to lend a hand, Ben's presence is a dependable force for good. He brings people together, inspires empathy, and is relentlessly the first person to raise his hand, qualities that resonate deeply with the spirit of Barrie's community. This award recognizes your dedication, time, continuous volunteering to several charities, and your contribution to the city of Barrie community. Ben, congratulations on this well-deserved recognition.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor Nettle and former Panther. I'm humbled and grateful for this award. I echo some of the sentiments that were said before me. We get back as much as we give when we volunteer. The reason I've chosen to volunteer for many charities as opposed to being on a board or sticking with one is because I enjoy meeting new people. It gives me an opportunity to discover what we have here in Barrie, and mostly it allows me to share that experience with others in hopes of having that legacy continued when they come out to volunteer. I moved to Barrie in 2000, taught here for 26 years, retired last June, and now spending my time volunteering, and I look forward to doing more so in the future. So, honest, thank you again.
It's now my pleasure to call Sophie Rennie to the podium. Rennie is the 2025 Order of the Spirit Catcher Award winner in the youth category. Twenty-one-year-old entrepreneur, Sophie Rennie, owner of Sweet and Sassy Bake Shop, went above and beyond to help a family, a Barrie family in need that she's never met. The local small business owner launched an online fundraiser and volunteered her time and baking talents after learning through a customer about a little girl in our community who was battling cancer. Sophie immediately stepped up to help the child's family by launching a cookie box fundraiser, where people were able to preorder a box of 10 cookies for $25, where 100% of the proceeds would go to the child's family to help cover some expenses. By working with the child's relatives to promote her campaign, over $10,000 was raised for the girl's family. Sophie is described as the most pleasant young entrepreneur and deserves to be acknowledged for all her support given to this family. Thank you, Sophie, for representing all that is sweet and good about the city of Barrie. Congratulations on this well-deserved honor.
Hi, I'm Sophie. Thank you so much. I'm so honored to receive this award. I started my business when I was 16 during COVID, and I actually just opened my first storefront last Saturday at 90 Collier Street inside of Kennedy's Lakeside Grocery. Giving back to my community is so, so important to my business, and I've done many fundraisers over the past five years of my business, and it truly means so much to me to give back. So I'm really looking forward for the next five years to do many more fundraisers and help people in our community. So, thank you so much. I'm really honored to receive this.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor, for walking us through those awards. Thank you to councillor Nagusay as well, who sits on that committee, sorry, for providing that recognition in the community. And one of the cool things about Barrie is, that many of you know growing up here, is you end up with relationships with so many. And the first fella, am I allowed to say that, Marshall fella, he was a big, big help to this council last year, and I think he was actually more than that. He was probably a big, big help just to the city of Barrie going forward. So while that wasn't really the focus of it, I just want to say thanks, Marshall, and the recognition is, you know, well overdue and well deserved. So, thank you. And Mr Capello, in school, I won't ask you who your favorite student was over the years, because it probably wasn't me, but that's okay. I'm not going to go any further with that one. And I want to recognize Sophie because you made a donation this summer for all the hockey players who played in the Boots and Hearts barn burner, and I just want to say thank you so much for that. And I'm sure they all had to do an extra, probably hour skate the next day because of the cookies, but it was worth every single bite of them. So, thank you for your contributions to us at the barn burner as well. Okay, we're going to move on past the recognition. If you'd like to leave, that's okay. We won't take it personally, but if you'd like to stay, we'd love to have you as well. And there's no reports from officers at this time, so we're going to move right into deputations, of which there are three this evening. Two of those deputations will be in person, one of those deputations will be online. And can I get confirmation we have the individual online right now? We do not at this point, so we'll see where we're at in a few minutes. So what I'm going to do is, do we have to, because they're emergency deputations, Madam Clerk, I think we have to vote to accept them. So I'll call a vote for all of council to accept the emergency deputations. All in favor? And it carries unanimously. So I'm going to call first Ian Rowe down to the microphone. Mr Rowe, the council is five minutes for the rules here, and so the podium's yours, and if members of council have questions, then that'll allow you a little extra if there's something to clarify.
Going back to the public meeting, I provided comments...
Sorry, I should have asked for this. Can you just give your name and address just before...
One, sorry. Ian Rowe. I live at 140 Dunlop Street, Unit 1603.
Thank you, Mr Rowe. Apologies.
Thank you. You may recall that I made a number of submissions with respect to this proposal at the public meeting. This is a difficult site, and many, many issues were identified through the owners' own consultants. Many of these issues, I really feel, should be dealt with as threshold issues rather than the design issues set out in the staff report. However, I'm here tonight to support the amendments to the original motion that were made by General Committee. Ashley was only going to speak if the opposition was going to speak, and apparently they didn't file their material or request within the rules, but the council has been generous in allowing them to speak. I wish I were speaking after them, but that's not the way the order went. There are still matters outstanding with respect to water table, previous use of the property, traffic, all of those matters which I raised earlier. However, I do believe the amendments to the original resolution are very helpful. The reduction in height will help to alleviate the issues with respect to protecting the public vista to Kempenfelt Bay. The increase in parking will allow a more functional building. We've all seen or heard about issues at Lake House with respect to the standard there, and the standard originally set out in the resolution was much lower than Lake House's provision or the amendment. So I'm here to support the amendments. There are other things I would like to have seen as well, but I appreciate compromise. So thank you very much to members of council. I appreciate your consideration. If there are any questions, I'm certainly welcome.
Members of council, are there any questions for Mr Rowe this evening? I'm seeing none. Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Members of Council.
Next one. Okay, I'll now call upon Mauricio Rigato, who's joining us virtually to deliver a deputation. Okay, we're going to move on to Diane Jones.
Your Worship, I'm online.
Okay, hello, sir.
My apologies, Your Worship.
No problem. The floor is yours. If you can just say your name and address, and then there's five minutes for you. And then if there's questions from Members of council to clarify as well, you'll be given the opportunity to answer those as well.
Thank you very much, Your Worship.
Thank you.
My name is Mauricio Rigato, a registered professional planner with Blackthorn Development Corp. in Kleinburg, Ontario. I appear before you on behalf of the registered owner of the Dunlop lands. I wish to thank council for permitting me to speak this evening, and will try to be brief. I also wish to congratulate all the volunteers. I'm a volunteer myself, so hats off to all the winners this evening. Our client respectfully objects to the amendment to the zoning bylaw, which would require a minimum of 1.2 parking spaces per dwelling unit and have the effect of reducing the permitted building height to 30 meters or 10 stories. It is our opinion the amendment is contrary to the Planning Act, including matters of provincial interest, the provincial planning statement, and the city's own official plan, which designates the lands for high-density residential use being part of the city's urban growth center. And that's the focus area for intensification growth, as we all know. In fact, the official plan requires a minimum building height of 12 stories. Accordingly, we respectfully request council reconsider this matter and approve the staff recommendations as outlined in the recommendation report. Our client and our team of experts has worked on the application process in good faith since 2021. The process included two preconsultations, a pre-submission, a neighborhood meeting, a public hearing, and three formal re-submissions in support of the zoning bylaw amendment. The results of the four-year iterative process concluded the proposed zoning bylaw amendment meets all technical standards and is representative of good land use planning, as verified by all city departments and external commenting agencies. Respecting our land use process and technical facts is critical to ensuring applicants are treated fairly and the city's planning is undertaken with the highest standards. The proposed zoning bylaw also includes various conditions through a holding symbol, which would allow us to continue to work with the city on critical matters such as housing affordability, site plan control, the issue of existing parking spaces encroaching onto our client's lands without a valid easement for the city. Also, our client has listened to the concerns raised by the public. From the neighborhood meeting, we allocated additional visitor parking, which was a main concern. To address the matters of insufficient parking, the bylaw states the minimum parking required, and the proposed parking is well above the city's own draft bylaw parking requirement of .6 per dwelling unit. This means if additional parking is demanded by the market, it will be provided. I'm not sure what transpired with the apartment building wherein insufficient parking was constructed, but clearly, the builder did not do proper due diligence in that case. Further, the proposed apartment building is sufficiently separated from the building on the north side of Dunlop by 27 meters, with a four-story podium and the tower portion being a point tower, reduced in width and stepped back, which assures views to the lake are not obstructed. We filed supporting materials demonstrating views are not obstructed, which were reviewed and deemed acceptable by city experts. A mid-rise building, on the other hand, would obstruct the views to the lake by creating a street wall appearance along Dunlop Street. Thank you, Members of council, Your Worship, for listening, and hopefully, council can reconsider and approve staff's recommendation so we can continue to work cooperatively in the next steps of the planning process. That concludes my remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mauricio, for your presentation. Members of council, are there any questions? I'm seeing none from Members of council. I just have two quick questions for you. You'd mentioned the reduction of the permitted height. My understanding is the permitted height has been continued with the motion that was approved last week, meaning that it was solidified at 10 stories. Ms. Banfield, is that correct or incorrect?
Mayor Nettle, that's correct. There was no change to the height in the zoning bylaw effectively by removing that portion of the recommendation. The existing height in the existing zoning bylaw remains.
Okay, thank you. So, just to clarify for the public, there has not been a reduction in the approved height. There's actually been a support for the current height to continue. Secondly, you mentioned housing affordability there, sir. Could you just give us an outline of what the plans are from the proprietor in terms of affordable housing in the building?
Your Worship, absolutely. I'd first like to take a second to address your first point, if that's okay.
I don't think that there's much of an opportunity for that, but certainly, I have asked you the question about affordable housing. You can move with that one.
Absolutely. So, there's a holding symbol proposed on the zoning bylaw. One of the conditions of the holding symbol is that we work with city staff to figure out the housing affordability strategy, and that is contingent upon the city's affordability strategy, which is currently underway. So the idea would be that after the zoning bylaw is approved and through our site plan process, we would work with the city to determine the amount, quantum of affordable housing units that the building can accommodate. And on the matter of building height, I got to tell you, the existing zoning is not in compliance with your own official plan, which requires a minimum of 12 stories for the high-density residential designation at minimum.
Sir, I think I already had said to you that the question was for our staff, not for you. And just one more piece, if we're going to see each other in the future. The norms in this building are that the planners show up to the building to make presentations. I'm not sure that we've dialed that into the deputations yet, Madam Clerk, but if we could, for future, you know, the citizens are coming out, spending their time. I'm sure the proponents can do the same.
I'm not feeling well-
Now move on to the next deputation, which is Diane Jones. Is Diane here this evening? Come on down, Diane. You're way ahead of us, Diane.
I'm always that way.
Sorry, Diane, it's on now.
Okay. My name is Diane Jones, and I'm at 150 Dunlop Street East and Unit 602. I'm speaking more from a resident and have been involved with the process, previous meetings. I missed the last one, but I have an update on that. And I do appreciate that there was some progress made at that meeting. But where I'm coming from now is a little bit different, but I think it adds something to what we're discussing. So I put this together, and I'm looking at for the city's developers' consideration. And I do a presses, and I'm starting off by saying the property is in the core of Barry with a waterfront. Is a low-rise residential building appropriate at this location? Just a thought. We've gone beyond that. The park and immediate surroundings are there for the citizens of Barry and for tourists who enjoy our parks, waterfront, walking trails, and events. Question is, how does this addition fit in and add or be complementary to the surroundings? Especially since it is located on the water side. And so that's looking at what is going to evolve. I know we've talked about the real specifics, but I'm taking it a bit step further in saying, for the developer, do you have any comments or thoughts regarding how your condo will fit in or blend with the surroundings? The park is so important to us, and it's an extension. We have a great amount of park. But this is a thought that I think we need to give some more thought to. And so, yes, do you have any comments or thoughts? Just would like you to think about it, and how would this fit in and blend? And then I was concerned about where would your condo have their outdoor parking lot located? Because that, again, doesn't add a good thought to the property, perhaps. And I'm not up to date on that, so I admit that. The second thought was, of course, congestion, traffic congestion, and we've already talked about that. But I just want to, again, presses this by saying that traffic congestion going along Dunlop Street East towards downtown is already a major issue, as we all know. Traffic is worse when the downtown is closed or special events, which we have. And fortunately, we do. That's what Barry is about. And with cottagers who are returning home. Also, going downtown is now usually backed up, especially in peak times. So there's a lot there. And with the added population in the downtown area, this is only going to get worse. So of concern is the traffic congestion in this area. For the developer, if he's listening, representative, what is proposed for the developer to offset these concerns related to the condo build at Baalcaster and Dunlop Street? So basically, those are my two topics that I thought were important enough to be here and present it. So thank you very much for listening, and I appreciate what you've done, and I look forward to see what is to come. Thank you.
Thank you for your deputation this evening. Ms. Banfield, maybe if we could take some of those questions over to developer to be able to provide some information back. Thank you so much. We're going to move into tax applications. Deputy Mayor Thompson, do you have any motions regarding the tax applications this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that the list of applications to council for cancellation, reduction, or addition to taxes dated September 17, 2025 submitted by the Treasury in the amount of $23,578.19 be approved.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that the list of applications to council for cancellation, reduction, or addition to taxes dated September 17, 2025 submitted by the Treasury in the amount of $23,578.19 be approved. Any questions or comments from Members of council? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? And it carries. Madam Clerk, have you received anything with the tax applications?
No, Mayor Nettle, I have not.
Well, that's a good thing that you hadn't, because I would have missed it if you did. Okay, so we're now going to move into committee reports. And it's General Committee from September 10. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated September 10, 2025, now circulated, be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated September 10, 2025, now circulated, be received. 25G-199, reported to the Executive Committee dated August 13, 2025. Any questions or comments from Members of council? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? It's approved. Deputy Mayor?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated September 10, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated September 10, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. 25G-200, zoning bylaw amendment for 375, 389, 393, Young Street, Ward 8. 25G-201, WC Little Pedestrian Crossing Improvements, Ward 7. 25G-202, General John Hader South Shore Community Center Expansion Phase 2. 25G-203, Dedicated Locator Agreements. Any questions or comments from Members of council? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? It's approved. Deputy Mayor?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that Section C of the General Committee Report dated September 10, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that Section C of the General Committee Report dated September 10, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. 25G-204, Sea Cadets Parade Ground. Any questions or comments from Members of council? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that Section D of the General Committee Report dated September 10, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that Section D of the General Committee Report dated September 10, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. Any questions or comments? Over to Counselor Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Just one quick comment for those still watching. Just to clarify, months ago, I think, almost maybe over a year ago, you had made the comment publicly about a desire to see that planners attend the meetings for which they represent their clients. So for anybody that may be thinking that that was kind of just on the spot or this one file, that's not the case. You've been consistent on that a while. I actually think there might have been some sort of, like, an item for discussion, something, something. So just wanted to back that up, because I know that's important on this, and fair is fair, and that was made a while ago. So it's kind of related to the file, but also to the process.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. And I think what may have happened is that we changed the policies with regards to the public meetings for planners, but we didn't contemplate the, you know, that's my oversight, didn't contemplate the deputation portion. Is that correct? Yeah. So I know Madam Clerk is present, and we'll go from there after this. Thank you, Madam Clerk. In Section D, any other comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that Section E of the General Committee Report dated September 10, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that Section E of the General Committee Report dated September 10, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. 25G-206, this is the 2025 Pavement Management Program Update and Contract Changes. Any questions or comments from Members of council with regards to Section E? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that Section F of the General Committee Report dated September 10, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that Section F of the General Committee Report dated September 10, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. This is 25G-207, the potential sale of property status update, city-owned property. Any questions or comments from Members of council? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that Section G of the General Committee Report dated September 10, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Kangal, that Section G of the General Committee Report dated September 10, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. 25G-208, Correspondence Support for Sam Consilla Revitalization Concept Plan. Any questions or comments from Members of council? I'm seeing none. All those in favor of Section G? And it passes as well. There's no deferred business or direct motions or presentations, so we're going to move into inquiries. Are there any inquiries of our public servants this evening? Seeing none. We're going to move into announcements. Counselor Kangal, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I have three announcements. I'll be quick. I spoke about those of you that might be able to lend some time and volunteer in your community. The Barry Legion, Legion 147 on Ferris Lane, is looking at volunteers for their poppy campaign, and that will be starting shortly. If you were interested, there is a volunteer information session on September 16. Please reach out to the Legion to find out more specific information, but there is more information coming up around the website as well. My second announcement is, if you are around on Sunday, the puck will drop at the Green Rink at the East Bayfield Community Center with our Barry Junior Sharks starting their hockey game and hockey season off. So please come out and support our Sharks and our ladies hockey. And then lastly, I want to just say that, hopefully, you've seen this. There's great social media coming out of the city. Our Heritage nominations have opened for Heritage Awards. So this is around spotlight on heritage conservation and awareness. I do want to thank the Committee of Volunteers. They are very inspiring around doing everything heritage well, around preservation to recognition, and also really facilitating how we engage the- and also really facilitating how we engage the public in this. So we do hope if you know a property, a person, or an organization, there are several different categories. We want to also showcase people that create the art of different types of skills alive. So please think a bit about how you might know someone that contributes to heritage. We'd love to spotlight them. Nominations, again, are open until November 10, and you can find out more information on our City of Berry website. And I see Liam in the audience, so just want to say thank you, because with every, every city committee, we do get a lot of information about those of you that are active and different developments that come forward. So we're always learning about what heritage means and spotlight on that. So again, if you're not sure, just give us a call, and we'll put you in the right contact with staff or the committee.
Thank you, Counselor Congle. And I'm going to move over to Counselor Morales. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. About two years, just two and a half, over two and a half years ago, Mayor Nettle, I remember being before council, we were like three minutes to going in, and I get a phone call, and it's my dad having a heart attack. And you picked, you picked a staffer and said, you're not, you're not going to have to answer questions today. Go drive, Sergio. I really appreciate you just being all over that. Two, just over two and a half years later, a sport that my dad loved so much, playing tennis, so this is my announcement, he won the men's B category, singles, at the Berry Community Tennis Club just a couple days, a week ago. So that is quite a feat. He had always played doubles, and two and a half years later, after a heart attack and winning that, that is quite, quite something. So I just wanted to acknowledge my dad. He's been playing tennis forever, back in Bogota and even in Canada. And I also believe in the past, he's been, as well as in the mixed, in the men's doubles, he won, or in mixed doubles in 2010, he won category, category B. In 2013, men's doubles, category B. And in 2022, in 2022, mixed doubles as well in category B. So this, and in 2019, I believe with the City of Berry employee, he won in 2019 men's doubles. So this is his first four-annual singles, and just want to acknowledge my dad and anybody else who might, you know, go through similar experiences. You know, one thing is the science of post-heart attack recovery, but the mind over matter really makes a huge difference.
That's great to hear, Counselor, and please give our congrats to your dad, and also it's good to hear very positive updates. I will say, I think it was on Sunday and Saturday, the tournament, and there was one guy who was going to play tennis there who didn't get to, okay? Just saying, it was me. And we had changed court, and then my wife beat me badly at tennis right after that, and it was the first time this year. So I'm going to blame your dad's win on me losing last weekend, okay? But I'll make up for it in the future. Deputy Mayor, I'm going to actually, there's a couple more announcements. Does anyone else around the table have announcements? I know I picked up the two. Nope, perfect. So we have a few things. We have residents, businesses, and schools invited to participate in Clean and Green Berry, and this is the citywide cleanup from the 16th to the 18th of October. You can register on the website before September 25, and that's berry.ca/cleanandgreen. It is, once again, time for Culture Days, National Celebration of Arts and Culture between the 19th of September and October 12. There's many events scheduled, so please check out Culture Days, berry.ca/culturedays. Doors Open Berry is happening Saturday, September 27, as you heard earlier, but please do check into these heritage treasures around the city. Curbside Giveaway Day is happening on the 20th of September. That's this Saturday, I believe. Is that right? Saturday? Perfect. If you would like, you can put things out at the curb, and if you'd like to have more information about it or get in contact with staff, it's berry.ca/alternativewastepossessionoptions. And Game On After Dark returns this Saturday, September 20, at Five Points Theater, 1 Dunlop Street. It's a free 19-plus event featuring gaming, cosplay tournaments, and interactive activities. Deputy Mayor, bylaws, and then my favorite part of the night?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Congle, leave be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second, and third time this day, and finally passed Bill 95 to Bill 104.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Congle, the leave be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second, and third time this day, and finally passed, Bill 095 to 104. Any questions or comments with regards to the bills? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? It's approved. Deputy Mayor?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Congle, leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time on this day, and finally passed Bill 105.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Congle, the leave be granted to introduce this following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time this day, and finally passed, Bill 105. Any questions or comments with regards to Bill 105? Seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Congle, leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time this day, and finally passed Bill 106.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Congle, the leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time this day, and finally passed, Bill 106. Any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Congle, leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time on this day, and finally passed Bill 107, the confirmation bylaw.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Congle, for the confirmation bylaw, the leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time this day, and finally passed, Bill 107. Any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Harrison, Counselor Harvey, all in favor? It carries. Hope everyone has a wonderful week, and we'll see you next Wednesday.